Okay, good evening. Let's go ahead and get started. I called the November ninth, twenty twenty one. Regular planning and zoning commission meeting to order at seven P M. We'll begin with item A, one A oath of office for new commissioners for Connie Barrow. Attorney Winter, will you please swear in new Commissioner Connie Barrow?
I will. Ms. Barrow, can you please raise your right hand? And would you repeat after me? I Connie Barrow.
I Connie Barrow.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of New Mexico.
The state of New Mexico.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Commissioner of the Village of Los Ranchos.
Commissioner of the Village of Los Ranchos.
De Albuquerque.
De Albuquerque.
Under penalty of New Mexico law.
Under penalty of New Mexico law.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item one B roll call. Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Commissioner Benavides.
Present.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner C V, present. Commissioner Michelson.
Present.
Commissioner Smith. You're muted, but I could read your lips. Commissioners.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Barrow.
Present.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present for the meeting. We'll now move on to item one C, the approval of the agenda. Director Justice, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve. Karen, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay, JT. I'll second it.
I'm over the we prove the agenda.
Commissioner Michelson has moved to approve the agenda. Commissioner Christensen has seconded the motion. Now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner C V, yes. Commissioner Michelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrow.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item two, public comment period. Residents may address the planning and zoning commission to comment on issues, problems or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Audience members will be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items as they come up. Speakers must register with the village staff prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Kiko, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak?
Oh, so tonight Kiko is out, so I will be manning the I T side of it. We do have someone who signed up to speak, Camille Vados. I don't see her attending, but I do have a phone number ending in zero five one four. I'm going to allow them to speak and hopefully this will be Camille. If not, please just let us know that you're not. If the person on the other line is Camille Vados, please let us know. Otherwise, we'll we'll assume otherwise. And then if you would like to speak during the public comment period, please let, please speak at this time.
You might need to unmute caller.
All right. Now, at this point, I don't see Camille in the audience. I do have a written comment that was submitted that they requested to read aloud, so I'll be reading that out loud. So this is from Chris Friedy at eight six four two Rio Grande Boulevard. I would like to submit two recommendations in the public comment section regarding the new bed and breakfast permit procedures. One, I feel it would be helpful to see the locations of the approved or denied bed and breakfast permits on a vicinity map of the village of Los Ranchos. Would it be possible to provide a vicinity map with that information when discussing future bed and breakfast permits? Two, in regard to the permit process, it appears that Tiffany spends a large amount of time securing all the paperwork she needs for the permit applications prior to the deadline date of the upcoming monthly meeting. I'd recommend that that village adopt a rule that your bed and breakfast permit request will not be put on a P and Z monthly meeting agenda until all the required paperwork is completed and received by the village. I believe that would be greatly advantageous to the staff and all concerned and reduce the amount of responsibility that is being placed on Tiffany to complete applications prior to the meeting. Thank you, Chris Friedy. And with that, there is no one else who has signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you, Director Justice. We'll now move on to the item three consent agenda.
I'm sorry, is there anyone in the audience who is, who wasn't signed up to speak, who wishes to speak during the general public comment period?
Commissioner Gay.
Yeah, I would just like to recognize Commissioner Benavides's election results for the Board of Trustees. Gil, you did a good job and we're proud of you and look forward to seeing you on the Board of Trustees in the future.
Thank you very much, Dan, and I hope you stay involved with all village activities as well. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gay. We don't have any other raised hands. We'll now move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item three A is approval of the minutes, October twelfth, twenty twenty one regular meeting. Are there any corrections or comments from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Benavides has moved to approve the minutes. And Commissioner Michelson has seconded the motion. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen.
Approved.
Commissioner Benavides.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Michelson.
Approve.
Commissioner Seavy, yes. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrow.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item four, public hearings and applications. I item A bed and breakfast twenty one dash oh nine. A request by Janine Mann for a bed and breakfast permit as allowed by nine point two point two five E one in the special use one P R D zone in the Fourth Street character area. The property is located at three thirty eight Los Ranchos Road Northwest and is legally known as lot fourteen La Plaza de la Huerta subdivision. Projected section twenty one. Township eleven north range three east. N M P M Village of Los Ranchos de Albuquerque, Bernalillo County, New Mexico, as filed in the office of the Bernalillo County Clerk on October twenty sixth nineteen ninety three. The property contains zero point one one eight acres more or less. Are there any commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? Okay, I'm seeing none. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in Director Tiffany Justice?
Tiffany, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Director Justice, may we have the planning report?
Yes, so this applicant wishes to operate a bed and breakfast at their residence with the permission of the property owner, which is their parent. The operation has existed prior to June of twenty one, twenty twenty one with evidence of operation since May of this year. In June of twenty twenty one, we adopted new rules for short term rentals. And the only allowable type of short term rental is a bed and breakfast. And so with adoption of these new rules, existing operators have a grace period to submit their application and be considered legally nonconforming or grandfathered in for two factors off premises operator and maximum number of rooms. And this application falls within that grace period. B and Bs are allowable in all zones as long as they have a bed and breakfast permit and is allowed in this special use one planned residential development zone. There's a number of requirements for applicants to meet and for, and this applicant is in compliance with all of them. The bed and breakfast is allowable use in this zone and the property has access to city water and sewer. A public notice requirements have been met. The operator has permission from the property owner and both the operator and property owner live off premises. And this operation can be considered legally not conforming for off premises operator. And in addition to the in to the operator noted on the application, one to two additional employees cleaners will be employed by the business. Lodging is shown within the main dwelling on the property and there is space for outdoor activities noted on the site plan. Both the site plan and the foreplan are compliant. Two guest rooms are noted on the site plan in the application, which is compliant with our four allowed. There's a third bedroom that's noted is not included in the rental, but even if it was, it would be within our allowable. Off street parking is required with two spaces for the property owner or operator and one space per bedroom. Two spaces are required with two rental rooms and is met with a two car garage and a driveway able to accommodate up to four parking spaces. Parking requirements are not required for the operator since they live off premises. Meals will not be served and they will not have a sign and their rules of operation are compliant with what we require. And no bed and breakfast application has been submitted for this property in the prior six months. This application is in compliance with the master plan and economic development section. And again, existing operation prior to June of this year allows for legal nonconformance of the off premises operator. So with that, the department recommends approval of B B twenty one dash oh nine request for bed and breakfast permit as allowed by section nine point two point two five E one in the S U one P R D zone in the fourth street character area with the following conditions and findings. The conditions that the operation is subject to the requirements for bed and breakfast establishments listed under section point two point two five E one. And per section I point two point two five E one E, this operation is considered legally not conforming for the operator off premises during rental. Per section nine point two point two five E one B twelve, the operator must include the license number in their advertisements. And per section nine point two point two five E one B fourteen, the operator must post their license in the operation where it's visible. And per section nine point two point two five E one B seventeen, the bed and breakfast must be inspected annually by the fire department with the findings that the application is in conformance with section nine point two point two five E one. And public notice requirements have been met. You will note on the application that the business app information is left blank. That's because they don't have a C R S certificate yet, but they will obtain that for the business license and that is a requirement for anybody who's going to be operating a business. So assuming approval, we would then withhold issuing the business license until we have C R S certificate. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. Are there any questions from the commission for, for the director? Commissioner Benavides.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm familiar with this, this complex. It's a, I would call them townhomes. And I think there is a homeowners association because there's a common area. And I, what I'm, what I want to ask you is do we need to consider restrictions from the homeowners association? I don't know that there are any restrictions in regards to short term rentals, but but what do you know about that Director Justice?
Commissioner Benavides, commissioners, so a homeowners association can have a covenants that limit or restrict shorter rentals or rental of a dwelling. I don't believe that the commission needs to consider whether or not a H O A exists and whether or not they have covenants that restrict short term rentals. The village's responsibility is to enforce our code and not enforce private covenants. So when we are looking at approving or denying an application, we look at the code in front of us. And I think it oversteps to have the commission enforce or add conditions enforcing H O A covenants, because then it starts to get into a question of whether or not the private H O A is supposed to be enforcing the rule versus the village.
So if there was a conflict, who prevails in this regard? Would it be us as a P and Z or the H O A?
That would actually be a matter between the private property owner who has a license from us, assuming it's approved, and the H O A. So as to who would prevail, it would either be the private property owner who has our license or the H O A. But I think that honestly depends on the court that hears the item.
Okay, so but, but your advice is, is list, we, we're, let's just narrow our decision to our jurisdiction and then the, it'll have to be resolved if there was a conflict elsewhere.
Yes, and we encourage property owners to be aware of the H O A, if, if there is an H O A and what the covenants are. That way, you know, they are aware of those covenants. We encourage them to comply with those covenants, but we cannot require them to abide by their H O A's covenants.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gay, did I see a hand raised?
Yeah, Drew, I had the exact same question Gil had and the next applicant coming up in the Los Terones has a similar, could have a similar problem. And I'm not so sure that I agree that we should not consider what a H O A would allow or not allow. I think that's kind of a legal question. And I guess it's not come up before and in these other applications, but in this case, I, I think it's reasonable that we get some kind of guidance from the village council on this. I don't know. I know homeowners agreements are, you know, not up, we're not, we don't enforce them or, or require enforcement of them. But I believe we've been advised on other issues that homeowners agreements do have some, some relevance in decisions that the planning and zoning commission would hear. So I would like to hear from relevance in decisions that the planning and zoning commission would hear. So I would like to hear from Ms. Winter on this subject.
Attorney Winter, would you care to address that question?
Uh, Chair, members of the commission, uh, Tiffany said it as gently as possible. I probably would have been a little bit more blunt about it. Um, but um, you are here to enforce the code. Um, and there is a contractual arrangement between uh, a homeowner and an HOA. And it would be up to the HOA to enforce um, its covenants. And Tiffany and I have come across this question a lot more often as it concerns not B and Bs, but as it concerns setbacks and sheds and building plans that need to be approved by an HOA. Um, and we really stay out of that contractual relationship between the homeowner and the HOA. And we do follow the code.
Thank you, Attorney Winter. Um, do we have any other questions from the commission for Director Justice at this point? All right, well, hearing none, is the applicant present?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Janine Mann, three, three, eight Los Ranchos Road. Um, Northwest Albuquerque, eight, seven, one, oh, seven.
Thank you. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in this man?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Mann, would you like to speak about your application?
Um, just that I've been doing this for a year now and it's been fabulous. We've had um, no complaints. We've communicated with our neighbors, what um, we're super hosts already, which means that we've, you know, elevated into this, this higher level bracket because of the amenities and the beauty of the location inside and out. Um, I think that also what came up at our annual HOA meeting, just what was, spoke about a minute ago, was the issue and, you know, our community has become really close knit in the past few years. And it, this was brought up, no one has any issues with the HOA. When, when I started um, doing Airbnb, I checked with our board and looked at our rules and it is allowed within short term rentals. Airbnbs are allowed um, as long as the guests abide by any HOA rules. And so I just put that very clearly and we've had no issues. We're very, very selective um, of who we allow. You know, they request to book, not anyone can just book. They have to have all great reviews. Otherwise, we, we just don't do it, um, because we respect our neighbors and, and our home. You know, it, it has been our home and we kind of come and go, so um, that's, that's the condition. We just don't waver on the, kind of the screening our guests. So.
Well, thank you.
So, yeah.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't. I think just, you know, I appreciate that um, being able to be grandfathered into the process. I think it's really been a benefit to myself and I, I know that, you know, when I, when I come back and I see neighbors, they've said, oh, we've met this great, these great people. They were visiting for this. And I think it's been a really nice thing for the community. We have a great guidebook where we say here, there's the ditches that you can walk or you can just walk out onto fourth street. And I really appreciate all the, the new amenities that are, have been, have been um, developed in the past year or two on fourth because we send them down to Los Ranchos Bakery for breakfast or different restaurants. And I think people are generally really surprised that the village exists in the middle of Albuquerque. You know, it's my favorite. I've lived here twenty years and it's by far my favorite place in the city. I've looked all over, so that's, that's it.
Great, thanks. Um, but would there be any questions from the commission for the applicant at this point? All right, well, I'm not seeing any. Um, Director Justice, is there anybody lined up to speak in favor of the application?
We don't have anyone signed up to speak in favor or in opposition. Uh, but if there is someone who would like to speak in favor of the application, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, um, if there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, uh, please use the raise your hand button now.
Okay, well, if uh, we don't have any raised hands, um, and I'm going to ask, are there any further comments from the commission before I close the floor? Not seeing any, so I will now close the floor for comments. Oh, did I see a Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, Drew, I, I was just looking over the page three of three of the Los Ranchos application does say that the village does not take responsibility for information on or enforcement of restrictive covenants on said properties, so it sums that up. Thanks.
All right. Um, now that the floor is closed for comments, is there any discussion on the application prior to a motion? I'm not seeing any. I will state for the record that um, because this application is in compliance with all the requirements set forth, um, I'm inclined to approve it. There's no other comment from the commission. Um, do we have a motion?
I'm move for approval of the application, approval of BB twenty one dash oh nine, a request for bed and breakfast permit is allowed by nine point two point two five E one in SU dash one PRZ zone in the fourth street character area with the, with the can, following conditions and findings as presented by a Director Justice.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner uh, Michelson has moved to approve uh, BB twenty one dash oh nine with the conditions as listed. And Commissioner uh, Smith has seconded the motion. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavy? Yes. Commissioner Michelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrow?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that the public hearing, item four A, the request by Janine Mann for a bed and breakfast permit is now formally closed. We'll move on to item B, Site Development Plan twenty one dash oh one. Request by Matthew Herrera for a sketch plat review for a commercial site development plan for a development in the gateway development zone, gateway district zone in the fourth street corridor and character area. The property is located at three twenty two El Pueblo Road Northwest and is legally known as tract one forty one A one, A one. As shown on map number twenty five of the Middle Rio Grande Con- Conservancy District, projected section sixteen, township eleven north, range three east, NMPM, Los Ranchos de Albuquerque, Bernabeu County, New Mexico. The property contains zero point four eight acres more or less. So I will say this, there is no action by the commission on this sketch plat review. This is an opportunity to give general information and guidance for the proposal. The commission should advise the applicant in the following manner. If the proposal has merit, if the configuration would be acceptable, and if the commission sees difficulty in the site development conforming to the master plan and the zone code requirements. Are there any commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? All right, hearing none. Director Justice, may we have the planning report?
Uh, yes, and actually, before I get into this, I apologize earlier, uh, when we approved the consent agenda, the agenda was correct. Um, I just want to make a general announcement uh, that the agenda that we approved does have um, item four for the public hearings uh, deferred, and that is BB uh, twenty one dash twelve uh, for uh, eight, six, five, zero, Rio Grande Boulevard. I just wanted to make that known just because that was public noticed. Um, but uh, they deferred their item uh, for a later meeting and that was done before the agenda, so the agenda is still the same, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that. Um, and so getting into this uh, site development plan application, uh, this is for a development for a light manufacturing shop, uh, retail space, uh, and office space uh, on a vacant property. Sorry, I lost my spot. Ah, okay, and so uh, the surrounding area is zoned gateway district with the exception of the property to the south, which is in unincorporated Bernabeu County, and that is zoned R one, single family residential. Uh, and so just, I'm going to quickly go over the compliance with the gateway district zone uh, with the concept as presented. Um, and then just note what will need to be complied with for uh, future steps in this process. This is the first step of a three step uh, process for a site development plan. This is the concept review where no actions taken. The next meeting will be uh, the preliminary uh, review in front of the planning and zoning commission and the final approval ideally by the Board of Trustees at their next meeting. So first with compliance with the gateway district zone, the proposed uses are permissive within this zone. Um, and the setback requirements uh, are met. Uh, the setback requirements in the gateway district zone only apply when there are budding of residential property that's not within the gateway district zone. And so that's why um, that fifteen foot setback applies on the south side only, um, and is met. Uh, the proposed building uh, is compliant with our maximum height limitations and uh, appears to comply with our design regulations uh, with materials that need architectural style um, and are compliant with what's allowed. In addition, uh, the building has a street facing entrance and mask articulation through different materials, colors, and window patterns as is required. And uh, the different facade heights of the entrances and windows reasonably avoid the rigid and rectangular building look. But the additional windows on the back elevation on the south side are necessary at this point to avoid flat blank walls, which are prohibited uh, in this section. Uh, but if the commission and board approve the elevations as shown, they'll be approving a variance from uh, that requirement on blank facades. The application appears to comply with off street parking requirements and then other requirements such as grading and drainage landscaping uh, that will be addressed in the preliminary uh, submittal. And so uh, specifically for whether the configuration would be acceptable, the proposed development has one ingress egress from uh, a Pablo Road um, and will need to meet general access uh, requirements and waste management requirements. Um, there appear to be no variances needed for that. Um, and just as a note, the applicant owns the lot adjacent on the east side. And while they own both lots, they can provide access to the back portion of the lot. And that's south of the building. Um, and they are aware that the access to that back portion uh, would be restricted with the placement and size of the building uh, where it is, should the two properties have different owners in the future. And so we've discussed options to provide access, um, but they're not required to provide access to that back side. As for uh, conforming to the master plan and zone code requirements, um, again, the additional windows or other massing articulation like doors, modulation of walls um, on the back south side of the building is going to be necessary to avoid flat blank walls which are prohibited. Um, and the question for the commission at this point would be uh, would you all approve of about forty five feet of blank wall on that south elevation? Um, as for mitigation suggestions, um, if the proposed use has economic noise, glare, odor effects on the adjoining properties or the overall health and safety of the community, uh, the light manufacturing uses uh, must obtain any required village county or and or state licenses or permits for their uses and of course abide by requirements for health and safety. Uh, but beyond that, it does not appear that other mitigation uh, is necessary. And the application for the sketch plat review is complete with all the requirements. Um, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. Any questions from the commission for the director? Not hearing any. Um, Director Justice, maybe you could touch on um, the the, the approval, i- if we were to approve um, forty five feet of unmodulated building facade. With, so we, we wouldn't be taking any action on this tonight, but the, this is more about future approval? Or is this stating that we would a- approve it in the future?
Uh, yes, uh, Commissioner Seavy, commissioners, that's a great question. It's, it's a bit tricky because the idea is that the commission is supposed to advise and review the concept. Um, and if there's anything that's noted that isn't compliant with our code, um, if you all are kind of okay with it at this point, you can proceed with giving a verbal okay that yes, we would approve, in this case, a blank facade wall. Um, and then the designs at the preliminary uh, meeting would show that blank facade wall. And then the approval of that site development plan would be essentially granting a variance for not conforming with our design criteria. Uh, the sketch plat concept review was a bit of an interesting step in this process uh, because ideally someone shouldn't be asking for something that uh, isn't allowed in the code unless there are variants. Um, but with design regulations, um, especially when they are a little bit unclear, not, not necessarily in this case, but other things like complying with our architectural guidelines. You know, what is considered New Mexico style, um, that, that requires a little bit more interpretation. So uh, the short of it is that my, my recommendation would be to not uh, approve the blank facade wall and encourage some kind of uh, breaking up of that uh, blank wall either with windows or doors. Um, but at the same time, this is a unofficial approval of the concept as shown.
And the, and the burden down the road, if they were to go for this variance, there'd be a burden on them to demonstrate a hardship, right, about this building facade, and that might be interesting to hear. Commissioner Michelson?
A question. What would, how many windows or what spacing in that would the code require them to have?
Uh, so we require that you can't have a blank facade wall for more than fif- a length of fifteen feet. So for a total of forty five feet right now, they would need to have three windows placed just right in between that fifteen feet mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Christensen.
Um, Ms. Justice, um, during your discussions with the applicant, did they give any reason for why they needed or why they were planning to have that forty five foot blank wall?
Oh, um, so this is something that the applicant will be able to answer uh, when, when they uh, present their application, but I can say that this, the intent of this building is primarily for manufacturing purposes. Um, and so most of the time, folks don't need to see or enter the warehouse space. Um, and so, especially since it's on that south side facing away from the street uh, where there's nothing behind it, um, it's kind of assumed that nobody is going to be looking at this anyways.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there's no further questions at this point, um, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Matthew Herrera, three, one, four, El Pablo Northwest, eight, seven, one, one, four.
Thank you. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in Mr. Herrera?
Mr. Herrera, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you like to uh, speak about your application, Mr. Herrera?
Uh, yeah, I guess the only thing I would say uh, about that south wall that you all spoke about. Um, uh, Tiffany mentioned it pretty well, is that it is on the backside of the building and it is on the warehouse portion of the building. Um, if it's, uh, you know, it's, it's really not going to be that difficult if I have to put some small windows just to break up those fifteen foot spaces. I prefer not to. Um, but if it comes down to it, that's going to be a pretty easy thing for me to do. Um, I, you know, it's kind of the objective of it being on the back of the building. Windows don't provide that much security. So it's, it's a bit of a catch twenty-two, um, but we definitely don't want to extend the process for the sake of putting up three small windows on the back of the building. Um, otherwise, nothing, nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any questions from the commission for the uh, applicant? Oh, Commissioner Benavides?
Uh, yes, so I'm looking at the backside now. A back elevation and I I see a door and what maybe looks like a garage door, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So is it like a normal height garage door or is it like meant for big trucks or can you tell me more?
Um, I believe that door is ten by ten. So it's it's larger than a single garage door.
Okay. All right, so i- is the intent that you would be able to drive trucks back there to for doing for loading and unloading?
That is correct.
Okay, but you don't have a permanent easement other than the fact that you own the property directly to the east, right?
That's correct, but through our process of providing the site plan. We I believe we were instructed to get that official as as an access easement through the adjoining property.
Yeah, that that sounds like a good thing to do, yes.
Correct.
Okay, that's all for now.
Commissioner Gay.
Yeah, Matthew, so that's a standalone building and and you say you own the property east of you. Is that would that be the? Where the old opinion window and door is?
Yes, sir.
And that. I know the Blakes, a lot of burger people own a little bit of that east part of their property. So is this where you're building in between the Blakes and the existing Pinyum? Warehouse, is that in that fenced area?
That's correct, that is correct. It's in between the Blake's property and the Pinyon window building.
Okay, would you commit to putting in the minimum number of windows? In that south wall right now, just so we can get over get over it with not have to, like you said, go back and.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Benavides.
Yeah, one one more question, so. So there's quite a bit of vacant property behind the structure. Is is there a plan for that?
There may be a future plan for that, nothing is actually in the works. The the current use of that is an approved. Contractors yard, I guess. And it'll it'll probably stay as that. But no, no, no current plans for any future development or construction on that backside.
But perhaps an area for storage of materials, though.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Director Justice, is there anyone present who would like to speak on the application?
There was no one signed up to speak. If anyone would like to speak on the application. Either in favor or in opposition or just having questions, please raise use the raise your hand button.
Okay, thank you. And before I close the floor for comments, is there any further comments from the commission, all the applicants as present? Okay, I'm seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the floor now for comments. Do we have any discussion on the application?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't see any issues with that other than, you know, I I think it'd be wise to have a permanent easement. Given that there's a a a big door, dock doors for loading and material storage perhaps behind. The building, but. Yeah, I mean, it's it's it seems like a good use of the property otherwise.
Yeah, I I do agree with that. It does appear to to be an acceptable configuration. I I agree with the comment about the access easement. I think that's something you might want to look into. You know, the modulation of that facade. You know, I'd be inclined to enforce that because I just don't see a reason why why not to. To do that, so that's kind of my opinion on that one. Any other commissioners care to care to speak on that?
Well, only that. Let's see if it's forty five. I mean, I there wasn't, I didn't measure it. There's forty five feet of blank wall, which I assume does not include the the door and the. The the bay door. I would think only two windows would cover that, right? From a from the corner to the first fifteen feet. That would be one and then to the thirty feet would be another, right?
Commissioner Benavides, roughly two or three small windows will be necessary depending on size of the windows. And you know how much extra length they'll they'll provide.
Okay, yeah, we're splitting hairs. Okay, fine.
And I would say it's not just windows, but there's other methods of modulating one's facade. So really is up to the applicant to figure out how to do that. Any further discussion before we move on? All right, well, I'm hearing none. Let the record show discussion is formally closed for item four B, the request by Matthew Herrera for a sketch plat review for a commercial site development plan. Thank you, everyone, for participating in that. We'll now move on to item C, bed and breakfast twenty one dash eleven. A request by Ryan Bromberg for a bed and breakfast permit as allowed by nine point two point two five E one. In the special use one planned residential development zone in the Guadalupe Trail character area. The property is located at five twenty Los Ranchos Road Northwest, number forty six. And is legally known as Lot Forty of Platt. Lot forty of Platt of lots one through forty, Los Terrones. Projected section twenty township eleven north range three east and MPM. Village of Los Ranchos de Albuquerque, Bernario County, New Mexico, as filed in the office of the Bernario County Clerk. On December fourteenth nineteen eighty eight. The property contains zero point one three seven three acres more or less. Are there any commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? All right, I'm seeing none. Director Justice, may we have the planning report, please?
Uh, yes, so like the other bed and breakfast application, this applicant wishes to operate a bed and breakfast at the residence. The applicant listed on the application and presenting tonight is an employee of the property and business owner. And if approved, the B and B permit would be for the property and business owner, which is Los Tronos Adobe Casitas LLC. So the operation has existed before June of this year with evidence of operation going back to at least twenty nineteen. The village adopted new rules for short term rentals this year and the only allowable type of short term rentals of bed and breakfast. And existing operators have a grace period to submit their bed and breakfast application and be considered legally nonconforming for off premises operators and maximum number of rooms. This application falls within that grace period and bed and breakfasts are allowable in all use in all zones as long as they have a bed and breakfast permit. There's a number of requirements for applicants to meet and this applicant is in compliance with all of them. A bed and breakfast is an allowable use in the special use one planned residential development zone and the property has access to its city water and sewer. As mentioned, the operator is an employee of the property and business owner, both who live off premises. And they can be considered legally nonconforming for off premises operator and owner. As it's existed before June of this year. One employee will be employed by the business, which is the property manager, the applicant in this case. Lodging is shown within the main dwelling on the property and space for outdoor activities are an additional amenities are noted on the site plan. Site plan is compliant and the floor plan is also compliant with our requirements. Two guest rooms are noted on the site plan and application, which is compliant with the floor allowed. And off street parking is required with two spaces for the property owner and operator and one space per bedroom or rental unit. Two spaces are required and are met with a driveway able to accommodate up to four vehicles. I apologize for the typo there. It's not fifty four. Parking requirements for the operator are not applicable as they don't live on premises. Meals will not be served and they will not have a sign and the rules of operation are compliant with our requirements. No bed and breakfast application has been submitted for this property in the prior six months. And this is in compliance with the economic development section of the master plan. And again. As it's existed prior to June of this year, the operator can be off premises during rental. So with that, the department recommends approval of BB twenty one dash eleven, a request for a bed and breakfast permit as allowed by section nine point two point two five E one. And the SU one PRD zone in the Guadalupe Trail character area with the following conditions and findings. But the operation is subject to the requirements for bed and breakfast establishments listed under section nine point two point two five E one. First, section nine point two point two five E one E. This operation is considered legally not conforming for the operator off premises during rental. Per section nine point two point two five E one B twelve, the operator must include license or license number in their advertisements. Per section nine point two point two five E one B fourteen, the operator must post their license in the operation where it's visible. And per section nine point two point two five E one B seventeen, the bed and breakfast must be inspected annually by the fire department. With the findings that this application is in accordance with the section nine point two point two five E one. And public notice requirements have been met. Stand for any questions?
Thank you, Director Justice. Do we have any questions from the commission? All right, I'm not seeing any. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Ryan Bromberg, thirty seven twenty one Mesa Verde Avenue Northeast, Albuquerque, eight, seven, one, one, zero.
Attorney Winter, would you please swear in Mr. Bromberg?
Mr. Bromberg, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak about your application, Mr. Bromberg?
Sure, first of all, thank you for for hearing this application. Good to see you, Drew. The property itself is part of the greater Los Tronos compound. We have thirty seven other long term rental casitas. This particular unit. Is the only short term unit we have on site other than offering great exposure for the village and its beauty. We also offer this particular unit as an amenity for our long term tenants for overflow, family and guests.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission for the applicant? All right, not seeing any. Oh, Commissioner Benavides, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I asked you a question and the information is already in my packet.
No problem.
So access to this short term rental, is it from Guadalupe Trail or Los Ranchos?
From Los Ranchos through the our our service road within the property.
And the square footage of this structure?
Approve approximately seven hundred square feet.
Okay, so it's a. Bedroom kitchen.
It's a, yeah, it's a two bedroom with a with a bath, yeah, a small kitchen and a living room.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions at this point? Okay, Director Justice, do we have anyone lined up to speak in favor of the application?
Uh, there is no one signed up to speak in favor or in opposition to the application. If you did not sign up to speak but would like to speak in favor of the application, please use the raise your hand button. Seeing none. If you are not signed up to speak but would like to speak in opposition to this application, please use the raise your hand button. All right, there are no hands raised.
All right, thank you, Director Justice. We have any further discussion from the commission while the applicant is still on? All right, I'm seeing none. I will now close the floor for comments. Is there any discussion on the application prior to a motion? All right, well, as as stated previously, it this application is in compliance with all the requirements. And for that reason, I I'm inclined to approve it. There's no further discussion, is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve SDP twenty one dash oh one with the conditions as.
Commissioner Benavides, if you could just amend that to BB twenty one dash eleven.
Oh. Okay, was that changed or I looked at the wrong thing? But okay, so I'll do that. Motion to approve SDP twenty one dash eleven.
Uh, sorry, BB twenty one dash eleven.
Oh, BB, yes. Okay, I'm looking at now. Sorry, I must have looked at the, okay. So, starting over, motion to approve BB twenty one dash eleven with conditions as listed. And Director Justice's report.
Second.
Hey, Commissioner Benavides has moved to approve EB twenty one dash eleven. And with the conditions as stated in the report. And Commissioner Michelson has seconded the motion. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christiansen?
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavey, yes. Commissioner Michelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
And Commissioner Barrow?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that the public hearing item four C, the request by Ryan Bromberg for a bed and breakfast permit is formally closed. And item D, item four D has been deferred. So we'll now move on to item five, old business. There is no old business. Item six, new business. There is no new business. Item seven, reports. Planning Department report. Director Justice, may we please have your planning department report?
Uh, yes, so Commissioners Jennifer Schilling, our P and Z coordinator and records information manager is working on building permits, parcel permits and the magazine as usual. This time of year is business renewals and so she's spending quite a bit of time processing renewals. Businesses were sent a reminder of their renewal beginning of November. They have until December thirty first to renew without a ten additional ten dollar late fee. Thomas Sanchez is our code enforcement officer. He's patrolling the village and working with property owners to bring the properties into compliance. It's pretty much business as usual. And if you've been on our website recently, you probably noticed that it has changed. We recently updated our website. We're in the process of moving some things over. If you don't see something that you're looking for, please let us know. There are also some links that are broken. If you come across one of those, please let us know. In addition to that, we've also updated our ordinances from being PDF copies to a searchable online code. That is hosted by American Legal Publishing, so now you can access the code in a different way. And just also letting you know that the grace period for grandfathering in short term rentals has ended. In order to get your application in, I do want to note that BB twenty one dash twelve got their application in by the deadline. And the requirement is to apply by the deadline. And so because they've applied by the deadline, they still fall into that grace period. And so also I'll be presenting a pilot project ordinance for cluster housing, also known as conservation development. To the board of trustees at their meeting tomorrow night, which follows through with the residential development action step that was suggested in the twenty thirty five master plan. I stand for any questions?
Like Commissioner Gay had his hand up first.
Tiffany, how many more B and B applications are have fallen in under that October sixth deadline?
Uh, so Commissioner Gay, commissioners, this will be the last one. The one that has been deferred will be the last one that after that point, any. Bed and breakfast applications that we've received will no longer fall within that grace period and not will not be allowed to be considered legally nonconforming. For off premises operator or maximum number of rooms.
When we get these applications in and there's no date on the application. I think it would be good, good form to to figure out how we could get those recorded. So people that are interested could look at dates and you know timelines. So people that are interested could look at dates and, you know, timelines of that stuff. So, um, so the only one that's outstanding is the one on Rio Grande Boulevard that you just referenced.
Yes, that's the only one that's outstanding.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Benavides?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Director Justice, so uh, as you mentioned, uh, the ordinances are online. Uh, and they're searchable now. Are they current?
Uh, that's an excellent question. Uh, Commissioner Benavides, commissioners, it is mostly current. Um, now that we're working with this uh company to publish our code online, we have to submit requests to them to update our code. Um, we have a few ordinances uh with minor amendments that are still outstanding. Um, anything that has been done um since the bed and breakfast permit. Uh, so after, after June, um, is, needs to be updated. These are mostly minor amendments. Um, but hopefully we can catch whenever somebody um is referencing otherwise.
Well, i- in particular, um, I I noticed that the uh, the approval for A C zone uh has has been amended, right? Uh, so that it goes to the board of trustees now. However, uh, that is, that is, that is not in the ordinances that I see online.
That is correct. Um, that's one of those ordinances that we need to change. In addition to that, um, well, it it doesn't, we don't need to change it. We just need to update it on a, on our website. Um, in addition to that, there's also a note that uh now de minimis home occupations do not need to be public notice. These are the kinds of things that we can catch whenever an applicant is interested in doing these things because they ideally will talk to us first and we can correct them, um, with just the fact that the ordinance that is online is just slightly out of date. Um, but we have submitted the request uh to the company to get those online. And so we will hopefully have those up soon, if not by the end of this month.
So in the interim, uh, so I I get it that there's a delay that you have to submit it to uh whoever is publishing uh th- this for you. Uh, however, uh, do we have a place where we can go to on our village website that says these are the changes that have yet to be updated?
Uh, we don't have one now, but that is something that we can consider and pass on to our I T. Uh, potentially underneath the ordinances, we could just have the recently adopted ordinances uh also up there for reference.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Justice. Um, we'll now move on to item eight, commissioners informal discussion. Um, wanted to say uh thank you or welcome Commissioner Barrow to the commission. Um, glad you're here.
Thank you.
All right, not hearing any other discussions, so we're gonna move on to item nine, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Commissioner Christensen has moved to adjourn. Commissioner Michelson has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The meeting for November ninth, twenty twenty-one is adjourned at eight oh one P M. Thank you.
A nice Thanksgiving, y'all.
Yeah, you too.
Glad to be part of it. Thank you.